Thanks.
Okay. Why don't we just get going now? I know it's a, we're in a, hopefully we'll never be, have a meeting where we're in the middle of two states of emergencies, two declarations at once, but we're getting flooded right now with calls from people, so we're trying to respond to them as they come in. So I know everybody and most of us were without power at home, so, at home. So we'll get to the meeting right away and then I just, we can session just for a quick update and then I'll head back over to the post. So anyway, thank you all for joining us today. The main purpose of this is to deal with the COVID-19 situation and just for purposes of clarification, because we are all getting inundated with calls, emails, text messages from all over town about parties. And what we're finding out is most of the concerns are resulting there, the incident not being in violation of anything. And I think there's a little bit of confusion out, or a lot of confusion out there. So we really hope that those on this call here, and we'll get out a release, we're going to do the e-blast dedicated to this, this week. Anybody in the press sets here will get this message out about what is allowable under the executive orders and what is perfectly fine. We, we really do appreciate the concern and I mean that. We really do appreciate the concern. That, that means a lot and it's a good sign. But we're also seeing a little bit of a negative side effect. We're becoming in some cases a town of tattletales, right? And sometimes it's not, and well, sometimes, most of the times that the, the police go or some of us have gone ourselves, there was no violation at all. For example, this past weekend, we had a flood of calls about a party up off of Clapboard Ridge. And the best, and you know, it turned out to be a noise factor, but there was nowhere near 100 people outside and they were outside, so there was no violation there either. So we really want the chiefs on here and Attorney Marino's on here. We just want clarification for the public and also to let us know before an event or during it, not after. After the event, we want to hear from somebody who may be tested positive, so the health department can do some tracing there. It's not about punishment, it's about protection at that point. So telling, contacting us after the fact just to let us know, thing is unless there's been a positive case, it's really, it's not worthy of anybody's time at that point. We would like to know ahead of time just to keep our eyes on it and, or during the event, and the police have been great about going there and checking it out. And I think sometimes when there's been no enforcement or no citation because there was no violation, I think some residents are thinking that the police are just, just don't care and they, they don't want to be bothered. And that's not the case at all. Chief, I'll segue, use that as a segue to get, to let you speak a little bit on that.
So the police officers have a protocol for responding to parties and it's been a longstanding one, especially because we often have concerns about underage drinking or other criminal activity. So as much as possible, an officer responds along with a supervisor. And now with the additional concern about COVID-19, the response is appropriately dispatched and the officers will investigate it. The, the party you mentioned over this weekend had a, had some live music outside. It was a group of about 30 people, but it was conforming to all the rules. I believe that we did have to go back there later on because the noise went beyond the customary reasonable time for a party and then they were, you know, the party was shutting down anyway, so they closed it. But again, the officers have some discretion, but in most cases, if there is a violation, they're going to address it. So it is disappointing. I know there was an article in one of the papers from a, individual claimed that the dispatcher told them, there's nothing we can do about it. Perhaps he was, we had already been there or someone else had already reported it. I'd like to get some better clarification from that person, I'm going to try to track it down. But under the executive order, Connecticut General Statute 2822, there are two different violations that we can cite someone for if there was a party that was placing others' health in, in danger. Of course, anything like that we do in coordination with the Department of Health. So I think it's just one of those things where we are getting people call up about people, a lot of times it's after the fact, like you said, and that doesn't help us because we'd rather inform and educate people, make sure that they're doing the right thing and keep them safe.
Thank, thank you, Chief. So those two situations were health, that was the second one?
Well, health and welfare. And again, if there's any violations of law, and again, under this executive order, Connecticut General Statute 19A-131A or 19A-131, I think it's I, are both circumstances that we can cite somebody, you know, we can give a summons or a, you know, arrest somebody for a violation. One of the things that we don't have is we don't have a current town ordinance in regards to that. And as others have discussed, by the time we would enact a town ordinance, the executive orders may be rescinded and hopefully we're returning to a little closer to normal. But it's one of the challenges we have with, you know, trying to address a new situation.
Yeah, thank you. And the next RTM meeting is a month away, which would coincide with the expiration.
I mean, one of the things we, we discovered is that as far as like a town ordinance in regards to consumption of alcohol in public, is not one of the things that many towns, many other towns have an ordinance regarding that. We do not, but there's other statutes that we can use, the state statute to enforce, enforce a law that is addressing those concerns.
So thank you, I appreciate that. So for those that are listening on this call, into this meeting, while we are not going to go for an ordinance right now, it just, not the time for it. We do have the tools to, to enforce the executive orders there. We're, we want to make something perfectly clear to everybody. We want some sense of normalcy. We encourage people to get out and socialize, but to just do so in a safe manner and, and not to put anybody, as you said, in jeopardy. And if we see something like the Ozarks, yes, there's gonna, there, and, and we can get there in time and not after the fact, then there will be citations. But barring that, we, most of the things that are coming in don't rise to that level. And I think we need to get that out there because people are getting riled up about this and I don't think they have all the, the pertinent facts of all the calls that are coming in. So we do have the tools to, to enforce, but we just would like people to be a little proactive. If you know something, just let it, you want to let us know, that's great. After the fact, the only thing really we could do is if there's a positive case, and maybe Caroline could, could, she wants to jump in here, we would just want them to, we'd like to talk to them just for tracing purposes, for protection, not punishment. And I think some of the kids were seeing a little bit reluctant to come forward, there they were. But, well Caroline, while you're on here, any update as far as cases in the last 48 hours uptick? Same? I think you're muted.
Okay. So the issue of the parties regarding the youth, that contact tracing and all the interviewing has taken place, it's over two weeks old. So anyone who has gotten tested and has come, has gotten positive, been positive, that it has been done. And those who were either mildly sick or not sick, asymptomatic and did not get tested, obviously we wouldn't know who they were because they didn't get tested. Again, the health department only files up on cases that are, get report, positive cases of COVID-19. This is the only time that I can say that we have interviewed people who have been positive and have been associated with social gatherings. Usually if it's not a, a small group or several individuals at a time, you usually can't nail it down in terms of, you know, some kind of activity. We've done a lot of, you know, contact tracing, we, you know, give suggestions on, on things that, or places where people may have gone and people that they've been with, but if they're in large groups at, at, at a big event, and I'm not talking just a party, I'm talking about an event like a road race, just an example, is, is very difficult, almost impossible to, to nail it down as to where somebody would have gotten COVID-19. But we, we do know that gatherings occurred in the community as a part of that activity that happened a couple of weeks ago. We did have cop, positive cases out of it, so we know that they have occurred. And of course, there was a, a big, huge hype about, you know, about the parties. It can be, it can be something else, another kind of gathering as well, but you know, understandably, all of my staff have raised children and they all have recognized the fact of the sensitivity that some of these kids have faced when they spoke with us. And so it's not, very natural at the fact that, that they would be nervous to speak to us. And that's not unusual for those of you who have children. That's not unusual, it just got really blown up out of proportion. I'm not going to say we got callbacks on everyone, but even when we do contact tracing with adults, we don't get called back as well. So I think that now that we're, we're beyond the issues that are pertaining around that activity, activities that occurred anywhere between the 15th of July and the 18th of July, yeah, 19th of July, is, is essentially over. So we have not gotten any information about any of maybe the other parties or gatherings that maybe the chief has talked to. We have no knowledge about those. And to my knowledge, we have no connections to those.
Okay, thank you. Was there, has there been any upticks in the last couple of days or do you have that information?
Well, we, we had an issue, as you know. We had some problems with Greenwich Hospital, the laboratory, they did make a statement in the newspaper about what had occurred with that. There was more than, several of our, our patients who, who were positive, had been called back to take re-tag tests. And we have not reconciled all of them. So with that, we, you know, we did report out, I think, 927 cases with not all the reconciliations. Until we're done with all of the, those cases that have been resolved, we can't tell you how many active cases we have, but I can tell you, besides that issue, on a regular basis, we're getting, you know, cases every day. We've been get cases every day for the last, you know, I don't know, several months now. So Connecticut is reporting as a state, an uptick in cases as well. And I think every town jurisdiction is doing it also. It's not a major uptick, although we did have one week that we saw a considerable number of, of cases, but we have no correlation for, to an outing or a gathering, which is a very unusual situation that you would have an uptick of fast size and have nothing to, you know, correlate it to. So I'm a little concerned about that because now we're down to, you know, a couple of cases a day here and there, but I also have this reconciliation that needs to take to order, to, you know, to, you know, balance it all out.
Okay, thank you, yeah. So we'd, we'd all heard that too, that there had been several false positives, but we just don't know the number. So that, okay, that's good to know and certainly when you, there's some reconciliation on that, if you could just circle back with us, that would be great, just to, for our own edification, so we know where the trend's going on this. So I appreciate that. Before we go on, any questions of the chief or Caroline? Yeah, hi, hi Jill.
I just, you know, I wanted to take a step back. It, it just sort of, when I was thinking, I want to thank you for calling the meeting because I think it's really important and I used it actually as a way to assess and think about some of the challenges that we managed and, and transitioned to the next approach. So I'm not sure exactly, that whole discussion that you just had was, was helpful, but I, I wanted to stop back and give it a little bit of a context before you go into the question of enforcement issues and things like that. Okay? So.
Okay, thank you.
So, so just like you, and I'm sure like Lauren, in the past two weeks, you know, I, I've heard from a lot of town residents and their feedback was both positive and also constructive, which, what's, what prompted me to take stock and use this meeting to take stock, which I think is great and we have a lot of people calling in. I do want to say on a positive side that the town had a very good record of responding to COVID over the past four months. We joined together voluntarily restricted activities and gatherings to flatten the curve and to lower the risk to our neighbors, first responders and healthcare workers. I do know that, and I heard, some residents disagreed with these precautions or felt that they were too restricted and I, I do respect that. So I do thank everyone, and I'm sure you do and Lauren does as well, for their understanding and forbearance as we navigated the last four months. And I particularly want to thank our dedicated town employees and volunteers. Some of them who are in the thick of it every day or on this, on the panel right now, they navigated this unprecedented time and rose to meet these challenges head-on and, and really it was a very challenging time. But we also heard that there were things to improve upon and some of the decisions were made quickly and in unprecedented situations at times without the full engagement of town leadership. And I, I would like to suggest that we use this opportunity as we take stock to, to address that and correct it without unnecessary delay to decision-making, to enhance our communication. I think your emails have been great for the larger community, but I think we can do better at individually reaching out to town leadership to try to forge a cooperative response. I also think that we can use this experience as we look towards the fall so that we can be better respond, better prepared to respond quickly. We know that there will be an uptick in virus cases and we can anticipate that there will probably be more economic distress. There are certain challenges that we know we're going to face, supply chain limitations, whether it be for PPE, for cleaning, for household supplies, basic food needs. We know that there are a lot of questions on contact tracing and also on act, restricted access to healthcare, mental health, support services, access for testing results and unprecedented needs. So just as a preamble, as we start to, it's very easy to identify the questions, it's not as easy to identify the solutions and to be able to work collaboratively together with the departments who are dealing with it on a day-to-day basis and also with the community and other town leaders to try to figure out how do we, how do we address some of these questions so that we are better prepared. I'd like to use that as the, the framework for what we're trying to accomplish before we get into enforcement questions.
Thank, thank you. Appreciate that, that and also your constant weighing in all the time and, and, you know, going over these issues and having time to reflect on some of the things. I think we, you know, we kind of are at the same place here, I think, as far as wanted to send a strong message, but also to make sure that people know that where we're coming from is we, you know, we want a sense of normalcy. We want them to get out and socialize and we just want them to do it in a safe manner. But we also, again, want people to know that just what is allowable, what's not and, and that it, it's, you know, you talk to some people, you know, some three, four times and they'll get so worked up over something that happened to, you know, two blocks away from them that they'll immediately forget about the previous conversation where the 100-person limit outdoors was mentioned and, and then they'll, you know, usually they'll catch themselves, but it's, it's a good thing. It's good that people care and that, I think that's, that's the positive here. But again, we just want people to take a step back and not worry themselves every, every time there's a party. If you are, again, if you are concerned out there, go ahead of time or during the event. After the event is really no use to any of us and, you know, unless it's been a positive case, then we need to, to speak to people just for their own protection and the protection of those that they may come in contact with. Lauren, did you want to weigh in on that?
Well, I, you know, I echo what both of you are saying and I think a lot of the feedback that I'm getting that we're sort of not talking about is just guidelines in general, not necessarily the party part. I'll still get a lot, and I know Jill and Fred you do as well, just the whole mask-wearing protocol. Again, recognizing not everyone feels like they need to wear a mask and I respect that, but there are certain protocols in place that we need to adhere to. If you're going into the grocery store, for example, if you're going into the bathroom at Todd's Point, for example. So I, I think our dialogue has to be more about how do we collectively have that same level of understanding, not just about gatherings of parties, you know, the whole prescription on keeping the virus at bay.
Well, well said. I think the, going back to what we've all been saying since March is bring the masks with you. You don't have to wear them all at all times, especially if you're walking outside and there's no one near you, but bring it with you. Because like you said, you go into the bathroom at a public venue, put it on. If you're coming, you know, every day when I walk over to the avenue, I don't have it on, I have it in my hand, the minute I get to Elm Street, I put it on because I, people are coming towards me. And I think if we can just continue to put that out there, bring the mask with you. And if you have it with you and you forgot to put it on, someone's going to tell you anyway, and at least, no harm, no foul and they'll, they'll, you'll, you know, put it on and that will be the end of it. But I think you're absolutely right, it's just the protocols, because the governors, again, the governor's executive order mandates the marrying, wearing of masks only when physical distancing is not possible. So just bring the mask and, and I think we'll just, we'll just keep hammering that home as much if not more than the actual events or parties, as Lauren said. So then I know you had looked into some things and the governor had, had said, you know, he's going to leave it up to the towns to enforce as they wish. We've already heard from the chief, something we've already discussed this week, that, you know, we don't really have time to get an ordinance for, in the next month or so. So we do have the tools and just a confirmation from you, we already have the tools and there are, men and women in blue have the tools already to enforce violations, whether they're COVID-related or not.
Yeah, Mr. First Lookman, that, that is correct. And in theory, I suppose, and the chief can weigh in if he disagrees, but I think the body of law already where, for example, if, if an adult had a child with them and they put themselves in a kind of a reckless COVID situation, arguably that, that individual could be charged with reckless endangerment to a minor. So, you know, there, while I agree with the chief that there are these two specific statutes that relate to the declarations of emergencies, I believe the other statutes are flexible enough that can be used, whether it be creating a public disturbance, risk of injury, that the police in their discretion have the tools at their disposal when they need them, if they, in their discretion, they decide it's important. But I think it's also important, and you know, this was an interesting exercise that I went through because it was not completely the norm for a lawyer who was trying to research maybe the law. You know, this is a, a fluid, you know, matter that changes by the day. And one of the things I discovered is, and I, I don't want to, I, I, I'll be the first one to, to say I'm wrong, that, you know, I'm wrong if I'm proven wrong, but as I was reading articles on, you know, from the science fields and the medical fields, this pandemic is likely going to be with us for years to come. It's not likely going to be with, you know, gone in, in six months or in 18 months. Most pandemics end through natural, kind of natural attenuation. When there's been a saturation of the population that has gotten the virus and there's just fewer and fewer people to infect, the virus becomes kind of less relevant in the population and fade, fades away. But even if there were to become a, you know, a vaccine, you know, kind of something like smallpox, we weren't able to eradicate smallpox for, I believe it took decades to get rid of some of it. So we have to understand that when we said we want to get back to normal, when, on March 10th, when the governor declared a state of emergency, the definition of normal changed. You know, we are in a new normal and we have to accept that. And we, we have to appreciate the fact that in order to address the pandemic that is before us, it's going to require a, a bunch of communities coming together, the medical community, the scientific community, the, the social community. And we are the social community and we all have to do our part to slow the virus down so that as it infects the population, the medical community can address those infected without it being an overwhelming number, you know, the, you know, kind of putting a cap on, on, on the number of people who get it at a given time. And over the course of time, unfortunately, years, this pandemic will slowly subside. But one of the things, what I was looking at was interesting, so the governor's state of emergency went into effect on March 10th and as a matter of law, that state of emergency will end on September 9th. The statute that gave him the authority to declare that state of emergency provides him with six months of jurisdiction and unless the legislature takes action to extend that, that sunset date, as of March, as of September 10th, there is going to be no executive orders in place. Now, the legislature may take certain executive orders and enact legislation to make those executive orders the law. That is a possibility. The legislature may modify 20, 28-9, which sets the expiration date for the governor's declaration. But what we do know, regardless of what happens up in Hartford, is that on September 10th, we're still going to be talking about COVID-19 as being a, a virus that's present in our daily lives. And so what we should consider is, and this is again, less about enforcement as, as I think the body has been discussing, this is, you know, we are all neighbors, we're all part of the same community and we, at the end of the day, want to protect each other from this kind of silent, you know, harmful invader that can cause terrible upset to anyone's lives and at any given time. And as we begin to try to transition back into what is more of a normal to us, back to school, you know, coming, reopening, what we have to keep in mind is that we have to strike a, a proper balance. The, you know, in order to keep our economy reopened, we have to take steps to protect each other from this virus. We have to socially distance, we have to wear masks when in public. We, you know, we have to really employ common sense is what this comes down to. And it really comes down to just good neighbors being good neighbors to each other and not putting each other at risk. And one of the things that you have as authority as a local government is you do have the power to adopt ordinances. And if you think about the, what is the best way of regulating this social action, the social behavior, the ordinance process may ultimately prove to be the best mechanism for that action. And that is because, you know, again, Hartford is going to be limited by the, the statutes that are already in place, but when you adopt an ordinance, you have to go through a public hearing process. So by going through that process, you're educating the public as to what you're doing, you're making the public aware of what you're doing, you're getting the public hopefully to participate in that process. And the local ordinance is less severe than the state statutes. In other words, you can have a penalty of up to $250, you don't have to have a penalty. It, it's not going to expire unless you set a sunset date. So you can have an ordinance in place that you don't have to worry about what happens on September 10th when now these executive orders are no longer in place and if the legislature takes no action. Hopefully, the general public will understand, it doesn't matter if there's a law or executive order in place or not, we all have to modify our sense of what is normal. We have to continue to engage in, in the social distancing protocols because that's what we have to do at this moment in time in order to get through this moment in time and try to get back to what was our sense of normal. And so, you know, if there's a, a time where you're saying we need to do something as a local government, the, the best thing you can do, if you feel there's a need for it, is employ the local ordinance process. Doesn't necessarily mean it's going to result in an ordinance, but it's going to definitely result in a conversation, it's going to reserve, result in a community discussion. It's going to reserve, result in a community discussion. And hopefully it will continue to raise awareness of the significance of this pandemic and the fact that the pandemic is going to be with us for a foreseeable window of time. And again, I, I hope that Dr. Fauci comes out with a, a report at the end of the week saying they discovered something and I'll come back at your next meeting and say I was wrong. But everything that I have read suggests otherwise. So, you know, it's, you know, it's important to know also what's, what's nice about the public, the local ordinance process is unlike a statute that comes out of Hartford or an executive order that comes out of the governor's office, the local ordinance addresses matters of local concern. What's, what you need to address in Greenwich is going to be different than what they need to address in Bridgeport. And so you can tailor your regulation to fit the needs of your community and best protect the inhabitants of your community. And you have wide discretion in what those ordinance are. 7-148 gives you from a policing power standpoint, very wide discretion on adopting local ordinances that protect the public health, safety and welfare. And again, from a process standpoint, you could impose penalty up to $250. It would be through the citation process and there would be a, a whole review, you know, appeal process if, if the public wanted to appeal that. But I'm not suggesting you rush to adopt ordinances. You know, I think that we, you continue to do what you're doing by way of just talking about this, by way of trying to educate the public and letting, letting the public know that this is particularly as a border town. You know, you have a double, you know, kind of a harder job because you have people coming in and out of your community from another state where other communities are just dealing with interstate. So you're dealing with people coming across the border from New York who are dealing, dealing with different rules in their communities than, you know, we in Connecticut are necessarily dealing with. So, you know, your job in Greenwich is slightly more challenged because of that. So I think education is, is the best tool and how you go about doing that is, you know, really a local policy question that you have to decide whether you want to make it more kind of proactive, where you, you do things specifically to keep this current in people's minds or whether or not you just monitor the situation as you've been doing and I, I don't want to say reacting because I don't think you've been reacting. I think you've been proactive in your approach. But responding to matters as they become more of matters of concern. But, but, but that being said, for purpose of, of enforcement, these executive orders are going to become, are, are going to expire on September 9. So there's, at this moment, other than doing what the police are currently doing, which I think Chief Heavy said it best, using their discretion is the best tool that is the best tool for enforcement at this point. If, if, if you discover people acting with reckless disregard for community welfare, you know, you may want to take affirmative action, but if it's, you know, I took my kids to the pediatrician for the annual physical. My son is 16, my daughter's 18. And the doctor said, well, you have to let them be kids. And I looked at the doctor and I said, I don't understand what that means. You can't let them be kids. You know, kids are going to be kids. I can't control, no matter how much I try, my 18-year-old daughter is defying everything I say about everything related to COVID. We all as parents have to appreciate that. We cannot, you know, we're not going to come down on
Remind you.
What's that?
I'll remind you, you are on video.
No, I know, I know. I'm saying it because, look, at the end of the day, this is real life. You know, we can't, we're not talking in a two-dimensional world. We, we don't live in a perfect world. We're, we're all, as they say, we're all just human and we're all born to screw up. Right? And our children, our children, we want to place within a capsule as best we can to protect them as best we can, knowing that their 16 and 18-year-old kids are going to stretch the bounds, no matter how much of a bubble we put around them. And we don't want that bubble to burst so much where they get hurt. So, you know, we have to be realistic in, in our approach. And I think, you know, the dialogue like this is kind of the best way of just keeping people aware. And, you know, and then addressing matters as they become more and more a matters of concern. But, so from a, from a legal standpoint, you know, I think a lot of this comes down to your policymaking and what you feel is best for your community. Your police should be your enforcement arm and you as a legislative body can initiate local ordinances if you feel they're necessary. But they're not required if you don't feel they're required.
Thank you, Ben. Very thorough and I can't say I disagree with anything you said. And we are looking at things going forward. Maybe doing a Zoom community where, event where we just answer questions. Also, I reached out to the Chamber Commerce Head to speak about a conversation, relay a conversation I had with a friend about going in and being proactive this fall where we maybe replicate with the grocery stores did in March, letting the seniors go early in the morning for an hour and a half, two hours to shop and then the rest of the, the community. And that seemed to work and we, I want to throw that out there to the, to the chamber. So they're working on getting together a Zoom there and letting the merchants and the, the restaurant owners decide if that's something they'd like to do because it really would start to adjust. If we're coming into flu season, there is a possibility of a second wave. We don't know yet. So as you said, it's going to be here. We know it's going to be here in the fall. So trying to be a little bit proactive while staying ready to adjust on the moment when we see something that needs to be adjusted. I think that's about all we can do. And I think that's what I heard in, in Lauren and Jill's comments too, is, you know, just be proactive, vigilant, but not, not overreacting to. And I think that's, and I heard that in your comments too, Ben. So with that said, I, I think we're going forward. We have, we're pretty clear here that we have to get the message out about protocols and when and where people should be reaching out to us. And I was going to offer up some other questions if anybody else had any questions as a panel or as a participant, but I see Jill raised her hand. So Jill first.
Thank you, Fred. You know, as you know, I think a little bit about this beforehand. So Ben, thank you for the, the legal analysis. I do think that we could utilize the, the lean six sigma question that the town has been trained in to ask what it is that we're trying to accomplish. Right? We want, especially as we head into the fall, we want our schools and our businesses to open in a reasonably safe manner. We want our residents to be safe and healthy, striking the balance between risk management and personal comfort level. And I, and I do understand that not everybody believes that this is a risk management issue and that it is entirely a personal comfort issue. That's a different, that's a different question. But I think that some of the questions that, that we haven't been talking about, the, the issues that I've really heard from residents were those who were hearing things and, and didn't gather, didn't get, weren't in the direct chain of information sharing. So and a lot of the questions came down to how do we, the contact tracing process, how are we working, how are we establishing protocols and systems so that when kids are at back in school and socializing with their peers in, in one manner or another, how are we controlling transmission or giving people comfort that we are able to quickly respond to any potential uptick? And I know there's a balance between information gathering from the state and we're not talking about individual names. We're not talking about privacy issues. We don't want to point fingers or any kind of public shaming. What we really want is to know that we have protocols in place that in the event there is a spread that we have a way to respond and that we can answer community questions quickly with real information, not personal information, but, but enough information that it resolves their questions and they'll feel comfortable. Similarly, businesses need to know what they're supposed to do if they hear of things in the community. And I think those cases were absent right now and we have the opportunity to prepare to do a better job of that in the fall when we move forward, when there will be more cases most likely. So I just asked if we could have a conversation about that and how we develop a more robust system, that what can we do to help the Department of Health? You know, what do they need from us? We're the voice of the community in some sense. So we, we want to have a real give and take on that. And, and the other area that I didn't mention, but I mentioned a little before is testing. That many of the questions that came up had to do with how do I access a test? Is a test valid? What do I do? When do I test? There's a lot of information out there, whether if you test the next day, it's not perhaps not a valid test. You have to wait the five days. Is it 10 days? All of that information, I think we could be a little bit more transparent onto our community and, and that would do, be a real public service to give guidance to the community members on that.
Okay, thank you, Jill. Okay. Are there any questions from anybody? Any guests or panelists before we go into executive session? See any hands raised?
There does not appear to be any hands raised.
Okay. If there's anybody that wants to circle back with me, chief, close your ears. My cell number is 203-585-7800. Rather that than an email because I get it right away. Glad to repeat or go over or answer any questions or address any concerns you have. But we just want clarity out there about going, going forward about what we're, what is our goal, what we're doing, what is enforceable and when you should be contacting us. And so again, I will Barbara and I will work on a getting at the eBlast dedicated to that this week and trying another venue to reach more people about this and to answer questions because I just think people are are concerned still and, and that's certainly understandable. So with that, thank you. I see one more question from Jill.
I, I guess I wanted to know what is, what are we going to be doing in preparation for school opening?
So I'm meeting with, I believe later this afternoon, Ben, I haven't checked my email in the last hour with Dr. Jones and I don't know if, I think Caroline had spoken with Ben yesterday, I think. So I'm, because of what's been going on in the last 12, 12 hours, I'll circle back on that. But there, I should be either today or tomorrow meeting and then I'll circle back with everybody.
So there can be an update, perhaps next week's Board of Selectmen meeting on, on how to have a, you know, how did we answer some of these questions that were raised in the last two weeks about contact tracing and, and testing?
Yes.
Thank you, Fred.
Thank you. Okay. With that, is there a motion to go into executive session?
Lauren, Lauren Raven motions to go into executive session at 1:50.
Jill Oberlander, I'll second that motion.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo votes yes.
Jill Oberlander votes yes.
Lauren Raven votes yes.
Okay, thank you. And Mary, did you want to join us on that too? Because it's about some personal matters. Okay. Thank you so much, everybody.
Fred, I didn't get an email on exec, or, or call-in number. What are we doing for executive?
I'll, I'll text it to you right now.
The phone number was emailed this afternoon before the start of the meeting.
All right. I guess you could just, we could just close our videos and mute ourselves.
Is it on the agenda, Barbara, that you sent?
She's, it looks like she sent it right when we went into the meeting.
Just before the meeting, I sent you the call-in information and Mary, I'll text it to you.
For some reason I can't start my video.
Looks like, looks like, oh, no, it's. I think we need a motion to leave executive session, right?
Correct. And then a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion to leave.
I motioned.
Sorry, Lauren.
Process.
I guess you're frozen. So go ahead. You can make the motion. I'll second it.
No, it's fine. Go for it.
All right. Motion to leave executive session at 2:36.
I second it. Lauren Raven.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo, yes.
Jill Oberlander, yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Okay. And we're back in regular, the regular meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn? The regularly specially called session of the Board of Selectmen for today?
I motion to adjourn our special meeting of the Board of Selectmen.
Jill Oberlander, I'll second that motion.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo votes yes.
Jill Oberlander votes yes.
Lauren Raven votes yes.
Okay. Thanks, everybody. Circle back. Have a good day.